Everybody, this is going to be a very informal meeting. My name is Ken Bell, I'm the City Emergency Management Coordinator. What we're going to try to do is get information from folks at the federal level to you. That's what the mission of tonight is. We have some folks in the hallway there that can also lend some assistance on the short term. I want to explain what's going on and how things kind of work in the system. Everybody knows it's a big system when you start hearing the words FEMA. The Federal Emergency Management Agency is a very robust group of people. Their job is basically to come in after an emergency, not really during an emergency. There's a lot of people get confused about what they do. They have a lot of rules and regulations that have to be followed and that's to make sure that the people that need the assistance get it and that people get the type of assistance they possibly can. They're not the only thing that's going to be happening for this assistance piece. We have another group of people called volunteer organizations that assisted disasters are called BOATs. It sounds very sinister, but they're actually really good groups. That's all these people in the hallway. So what's going to happen after, in the next few weeks, it's already started. We have what's called a Transition Committee. Now this committee, we're going to talk a little bit more about long-term after these folks from FEMA get an opportunity to tell you what the immediate solutions are. But there's a lot of steps that are going to be happening. This is going to be going on for some time. We're going to have to try to rebuild entire houses. We're talking hundreds of houses, not just one or two. And as you see, when you build a neighborhood, it takes a long time to make that happen. Also, the group that's going to be doing it are your neighbors. And so these BOAT groups or the volunteer organizations that are in the hallway, some that you don't see here today, we're going to get all these groups together and form boards and little groups. It's not as ominous as it sounds. It's not another big government organization. It's a volunteer organization that's going to be running for some time. But those people are going to get their, the right mission accomplished. There's communities just like ours that have been through this before and we're using things that they've learned to do it the best way that we possibly can to make this happen. I know that there's nothing that's going to make anybody whole out of this, but if anybody in our community hurts, everybody in our community hurts. It doesn't matter whether you've had water or not. Everybody's impacted. If you're impacted, everyone in this town is. And so it's in everybody's interest to get this town whole and get our community back to where it needs to be. With that, Yolanda, are you flipping around?
I am.
Ah, I was looking for you. Like I said, it's pretty informal. Give her an opportunity. She's with the Small Business Administration, and don't let the words fool you. She'll explain what that is and how you need to apply for that.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Yolanda Stokes, I'm with the SBA. The Small Business Administration in disasters not only helps businesses, but we're here to help our homeowners and renters as well. And I know some of you, many of you have probably already applied with FEMA. By show of hands, can I just see how many folks have already taken that step? Okay, very good. Because the entryway, or the gateway, if you'll call it, to getting disaster assistance is to apply with FEMA first. Then, you can apply with SBA. And I wanted to share very valuable information with you regarding the SBA Disaster Loan Program. SBA can provide loans for my homeowners for up to $200,000, okay? Has to be your primary residence, cannot be a secondary home. It just needs to be your primary residence, okay? And for my homeowners and renters, we have $40,000 available to replace or repair your personal property. So the homeowner could have eligibility for up to $240,000, just including that primary residence and the replacement of your personal property. Renters, again, up to $40,000. And then, our businesses eligible up to $2 million. The $2 million from the business owner encompasses your physical loss as well as any economic injury. What you want to do ahead is register with FEMA first, okay? And go ahead and complete that SBA loan application regardless of whether or not you feel that you're going to need a loan. There's a lot of flexibility built into the SBA loan program. If you are approved for a loan, you don't necessarily have to take the loan. We don't want you to wait for your insurance to settle. We want you to go ahead and move forward in your disaster recovery. We want you to go ahead and apply for that loan. If your needs change down the line, you can cancel the loan. The interest rate on my home loans are 1.68%. Interest rate on nonprofits, 2.65%. And 4% on my business loans. You can have a term up to 30 years, so our loans are very similar to a mortgage. When you think about, you know, where you are in your mortgage and the lien position on your SBA loan, SBA will take the next available lien position. We don't have to be in first, we don't have to be in second. There will be requirement for collateral on any loan over $25,000 and we'll just take the next available lien position. But for any loan under $25,000, it's unsecured, okay? So we encourage you to apply. There are three ways which you can apply. We want you to take advantage of our disaster recovery centers that we set up. We actually have a temporary location right outside the, at the parking lot for now, but we're going to have a permanent location on Friday at 501 LBJ. And we'll be there to service you Mondays through Sundays and we'll have our FEMA partners, we'll have SBA staff and some other state, federal partners there with us. And that will be a full-fledged disaster recovery center. I want to make sure I'm not missing anything. Three ways that you can apply. Disaster recovery centers preferred because we want to help you, we want to provide that face-to-face assistance. We don't want you to have to worry about having a computer or having access to a computer. We can expedite the process of getting your application submitted when you go to the disaster recovery centers. We'll see one of our staff there to take the questions, you know, some of the mystery out of the program and help walk you through it. We've got laptops there, we can submit the application right there onsite. If for some reason you have friends or relatives who can't make it into one of the disaster recovery centers, you can call 800-659-2955. We can have an application actually mailed to someone if that need be. Or if you do have access to a computer, we encourage you to apply online. If you're, you know, comfortable with it, please apply online. You can apply online also for your FEMA registration. So there's a lot of flexibility in getting the assistance that you need. We want you to share this information with people who didn't make it out to tonight's town. Please share with your neighbors. I'll be available after the meeting to answer one-on-one questions for you. I've been around with SBA for about 10 years, have actually processed loans, so I've got a lot of information that I can share with you if you have individual specifics that you need answered regarding your personal situation. I'll be glad to help you with that. Again, a number to remember because we're adding new counties day by day and some people, you may have friends and family in other counties and they're trying to figure out where they should go, what center. You can go to any disaster recovery center, does not have to be in your county, designated county. But if people want more information about the program, we have availability online, sba.gov/disaster to obtain information or that 800 number, 800-659-2955 would be a great resource for you. Please let me know if I can answer any questions afterwards. I also have some takeaways for you. Thank you.
We won't let her go far so you guys can have an opportunity to ask questions after we get Nathan up here. Remember to apply for the SBA loan regardless of whether, let these blue shirts stay on this side of the room. We have a lot of city folks on the backside of the room, including building inspections, planning, development services folks. They can help you with questions about that sort of thing. But apply for the SBA whether you're going to take it or not. If you don't apply for it on the front end and you get denied for the IA, which Nathan or the Individual Assistance with Nathan's going to talk about, and you didn't do this, then you may not be eligible for more things. Nobody knows what the names of those are, but you have to, because those come up after the emergencies. They get created based on the emergency a lot of times. Grants get stood up and we don't know what those are until after the disaster's started. So, but if you don't do these two applications, you can always turn it down if you don't like that piece, if you don't want to get a loan, you don't have to take it. But you have six months to make that decision versus not doing it at all. You can apply six months from now, but you have to do it now. So we always recommend that. Nathan, are you in the room?
I'm ready.
All right. Nathan Faye is with Individual Assistance. This is the guys up there in the trailer and we have a little table right out back here. I'll probably take you back.
Good evening, everybody. Can everybody hear me okay? All right, first of all, my name is Nathan Faye. I'm working at the Austin Joint Field Office. I've been with FEMA 11 years now. And we're going to talk about Individual Assistance. I'm going to kind of give an overview first and then maybe open it up again to questions that anybody might have about just general things about the program. First of all, show of hands, I know Yolanda asked who has registered, who hasn't registered with FEMA yet? Just a few of you, okay? We do have the mobile office, which is open till I believe 7:00 PM tonight, which is actually out in the parking lot. They can register you there. You can also register online. You can register by calling 1-800-621-3362. We also have a couple of our disaster survivor team that's actually out back with a couple of the iPads. They might be able to register you here and they're going to stay a little bit later tonight. I'm not sure what time the meeting's going to end, but the most important thing is that you get in line, get registered, and don't predetermine if you're going to be eligible or ineligible. Let us do that and see what we can help you with. Again, I'm working at the Joint Field Office, which we're working with our state partners. We're in Austin. We have a lot of satellite offices all over the state. And right now, things that I wanted to talk about again is don't determine your own eligibility or ineligibility. Make sure whatever letters you get from FEMA that you follow through on the letters, the timeframes, your appeals, things like that. The other thing I wanted to stress is that right now, Yolanda had just mentioned that there's going to be a fixed disaster recovery center on 501 LBJ. That's going to help out a lot. We have applicant services staff that's going to be manned in that center. They can answer a lot of questions one-on-one that you might have for me or our team tonight, but we don't have computers in front of us, we can't look up your cases, and we want to give you the privacy to speak one-on-one with you if you're not able to call our 800 number. The 1-800-621-3362 number is I believe 7:00 AM till 12:00 midnight, seven days a week. So if you work or if you have long hours, irregular hours, you have general questions about your file, you can call that number and speak to them, ask questions, ask about your appeal letters, your denials, what you were approved for, things like that. They have really good teams there and we work in conjunction with them. Our field office in Austin, we do a lot of the reviews hands-on. Again, our satellite offices with the disaster recovery centers. Anything that you say, bring in paperwork, things like that, appeal, submit your insurance settlements, denials, things like that, it's all going to filter up to us. We'll be able to look in your file as well. You may be getting a call from us, you may be getting a call from the helpline. There may be something that you need to submit to keep going in the process. You may have stepped out of line, maybe you had flood insurance, maybe you had homeowners, maybe you had hail, wind driven rain, and flood. You may have only done your partial home repair. There might be a whole chunk of money waiting for you that you don't know about. For a lot of you, show of hands, how many people, this is their first disaster with FEMA? Yeah? I've been through two myself. It's a long process, it can get discouraging, but if you follow through, sometimes the letters are a little discouraging. You get a letter that says you're eligible for some home repair, not eligible for this, vice versa. You might be ineligible for this, ineligible for this. There's a reason for that, and I didn't know it either. I've been with FEMA 11 years. I went through Katrina, I went through some of the big ones and it's not easy. But what we try to do is we try to ease all the stress you might have for the process. You know, we use a lot of acronyms. We make a lot of assumptions that everybody knows exactly what we know, but it took me 11 years to get up here and speak to you today to understand every little thing that goes on when you register. Some of the other things that I wanted to go over really quick, again, about eligibility. We don't want you really predetermining your own eligibility. And if you have neighbors or friends or family that were affected, whether they, you know, drove their car to visit you and their car got flooded and they have insurance but they're not sure if it's going to cover, make sure you spread the word and have people apply so they can get in line so that we can see how we can help them as well. Again, you know, if you're a renter, owner, we want you to apply. We also understand sometimes you might lose things like furniture, clothing, appliance, things like that. And as Yolanda spoke about, it's very imperative. If you've got a packet in the mail, you may have received a couple. One of them looks something like this. Does this kind of look real to anybody? It's a Help After Disaster booklet. If you chose that you wanted email correspondence, they would have sent you this by email. This is also available on FEMA.gov if you want to print out a PDF of it. You can also call the 1-800 number and ask for another copy, or if you did not get one and you want it in Spanish, you can actually request one in Spanish as well. You should have received this and some of you all might have received a SBA packet in the mail. And if you have questions about it or you're not comfortable filling it out, you don't want to mail it in, like Yolanda was saying, there's going to be a mobile unit out here for a couple more days and they're supposed to open a fixed location. Not only will there be FEMA applicant services staff on hand to answer your one-on-one case reviews, they can actually walk you through the SBA process too because it is, it's a lot of paperwork. I've had to do it and I, I'm not a big fan of paperwork, I'll be honest. But there is a light at the end of the tunnel, there's a reason for some of it. We can't open up some of the doors to the grants if we don't know if you're eligible for a loan or not. And again, you don't have to take any loan, it's just part of the process. And I just also wanted to say, if you have any questions about your appeals and who to talk to, if you think of it at 10 at night and you're sitting there in your living room or in your car and you want to talk to somebody about your appeals, we have that 1-800 FEMA number for the IA for the housing side, but we also have the Texas Health and Human Services Commission, which is processing the personal property and other needs assistance grants. And that number, if everybody has that, you should have got that number by now, but if you don't have it, we are making sure everybody has that number because they will help you walk through that process. If you got denied for your car, if you got denied for something under the other needs assistance, your medical or dental, things like that, that number, I believe they're working Monday through Saturday, it is a 1-800 number. Would you guys like me to give you that number just to make sure you have it?
Yes, please.
Okay. The number's going to be 1-800-582-5233. And again, if you have specific questions that are related to your personal property grants, things like medical, dental, storage, moving, things like that, you want to call that number. They have caseworkers that are going to help you through the appeal process. Or even if you're eligible for something and you want to appeal, if you don't understand how much you've got or why you didn't get more money, they will help you. And the other number again is 1-800-621-3362. Again, our staff is there seven days a week. They're intake for registrations, but they also have caseworkers, crew leads, managers, supervisors that will help you one-on-one with your case over the phone if you choose not to come to a recovery center. And again, the advantage of the recovery center, I've been to a couple on the other end of the table. I have worked on this side with FEMA for 11 years, but sometimes one-on-one, it's easier to talk to somebody about your case than doing it over the phone. Sometimes it's just more comfortable, you can explain your situation better and sometimes it's easier if you have paperwork to bring in, if you can't afford to fax something, you don't have extra money, if you don't have a fax machine, I know I don't, you can bring the paperwork that we're requesting into one of those centers and they will send it in for you. So you don't have to have that extra charge and that will help your process a lot faster. We also will have crisis counseling available. They have litigation. There will be SBA representatives, there'll be FEMA representatives. And from being on the other side of this for many years, there's a lot of resources in your area of San Marcos that I don't know about, but a lot of the charities, a lot of the locals, a lot of the volunteer agencies will bring in great resources and drop them off at the center. And we'll work a month and find out that y'all are getting like some of the best like care out here, you know, 30 miles up the road. And Austin, we're going, whoa, how do they know about that? It's because people in your community care and they, you know, they want you guys to recover. So it's a really good spot and take advantage of it too because we're going to be here for as long as needed. You know, we're not the type of people, we come in, leave in a week and there's no footprint. We like staying in this area. We want to make sure that you guys are taken care of. And again, our Austin office, you know, we're going to be there for a while too. I just got here a week ago, I think I've, it feels like I've been here a couple weeks already, but it's good. You know, we're here to help you guys or help, you know, help people that went through something we hope you don't have to go through again and we'll try to make it as easy as possible. So I'm going to hand off to the next person and I think we're going to open it up to questions after everybody speaks. Is that correct? Okay. So save your question if you have it, save it because we will, we'll get to it. So, thank you guys.
Okay, I'm going to cheat. What you should have got out of that is if something, if you get your packet and you didn't get what you were supposed to get or you didn't think you were supposed to get, appeal. That's the big word, okay? Don't be afraid to appeal. I know all the ones in the blue shirts are going, huh? No. They're actually good folks, they want you to appeal. They want you to get what's, what'll help you recover in this situation. The disaster recovery center that he's talking about, the permanent one here in San Marcos, it's at 501 South LBJ at the San Marcos Independent School District Administration Building. It's actually next door, a little portable building. That's where that DRC will be located. Let's see. Anybody have flood insurance? NFIP flood insurance? Okay. We do have NFIP folks here. Two of them, they're going to be, I think one of them, yeah, they're in the table right outside. If you have specific question, oh, right there, the one. So if you have specific questions, which we're about to get into, I don't think there's anybody else up for a specific presentation, so I'm going to go ahead and get right into the question piece. And what we need to do, we're online with this so folks can listen from home and we have a microphone for you to ask your question. And my fine friend Trey is going to help us make that work. Now here's the scary part, anybody have a question?
What was that?
Let's get that microphone for you. Hey Trey, can you get the mic for us? Right there, young man right there.
Yes, what was the 1-800 number that Nathan gave?
Nathan gave the 1-800 number.
Yeah. What was the 1-800 number again?
What was that?
The 1-800 I gave.
Oh, it's, was it the first one I gave or the 1-800-621-FEMA?
Yeah, that one.
Okay, so 621 and then it's 3362. It spells FEMA, so it's 3362.
What were their hours?
Their hours, normally during heavy hurricane season, it usually goes to 24 hours, but I think right now it's, I believe it is 6:00 AM till midnight. They're there a little bit more after usually working hours. You'll find that the heavy call volumes probably between like 4:00 and 7:00 PM. If you think, like I said, if you think of something that's specific to your case, you can call them at 8:30 at night if you're about to go watch your favorite TV show and go, you know what, I think I'll call that first. And they're trained, they've been there for many years, they've done a lot of disasters, they do tornadoes, hurricanes, floods. They'll try to help you the best they can. And usually they'll steer you in the right direction to the next step. And even if you get to that next step and then you get another letter, you can appeal that. You can call back and say, you know, it's still not what I thought I would get. It's, it is a process, but that number is there for your convenience. It's 800 number, so it shouldn't cost you anything. Again, their hours will probably expand as we get more into heavier hurricane seasons.
What time zone others are?
They're based, there's call centers all throughout the country. I know they have an east coast one, they have some in California, they have some in the central time zone too. So I want to say even people in California that may want to call till midnight, it would route to their side, like the Pacific time zone, so.
My question is, if you didn't qualify for the loan, what would happen if you didn't qualify?
Okay, if you didn't qualify for an SBA loan, their system talks with FEMA's system. As soon as that loan is either declined, if you're found ineligible for some reason, again, it's income dependent. That's one of the parts of the process that is income dependent. Sometimes you don't get a packet in the mail. Not everybody, not all 5, 10,000 people that apply get that packet. There is an income test, it changes every year. It's based on your dependence, if you're single, married, things like that. The next step would be you'll get another letter saying if you're eligible for, again, say things like transportation, your personal property, your refrigerator, things like that, that you may have lost that were uninsured items. We don't duplicate anything that insurance would cover, but again, if you get declined for that loan, it opens the door for a possible grant. It's called other needs assistance and again, you-
Do they call you or notify you in a letter?
They'll notify you in a letter and chances are, somebody may call you if it's something that we need from you in our office. The other thing I was going to ask, part of this process, once you send in what's asked of you, most of you should have had an inspection by now. Either a man or woman came to your home, they tried to contact you with sometimes an out of area phone number, sometimes they have ones that they can only pick up when they get to the disaster. They will come through your house, your apartment, see the damages, they surveyed it, they relayed that back to us. And again, you may not decide that what they found was exactly correct. That's why you have appeals. That's why you have the right to appeal. And if you don't know how to do an appeal or how to write the letter or what to ask or, you know, you think it's going to cost you more money, then you need to let us know.
Is it good for you to have photos of the damage on your property?
She's asking, is it good to have photos of the damage? When the inspector comes, they will probably take a look at those photos. Chances are, they don't get to your house right away, say you had nine inches of water on the first floor and dried out, everything is kind of mucked and you threw it outside, you took drywall, things like that. They're going to see the high watermark, things like that. Photos, they will usually take a look at them. Not every inspector's the same and I can't speak for them, they work in another area of FEMA. But they also have an Inspection Services Coordinator that works in our office up in Austin. So if there's any issue in the field, if there's trends, things that they're missing or things that are doing well, they have a supervisor that is in contact with our group as well. So you can show them photos, I don't know if they will take them, they're all different. As far as I know, they usually don't take them and scan them into your file. But they may take a look at it and say, oh, well, we need to go check out that living room, I didn't notice that. You know, and this isn't multiple causes of damage, this is kind of, this is not one simple thing that happened. It wasn't just the flood, you had hail, wind driven rain, some areas had isolated tornadoes. Those are all different causes of damage. So each case, every single one of you in here, your case is going to be totally different. You know, just like, you know, I could look at yours and I could look at his and I could look over here. You guys are going to have some similarities, but they're not going to be exactly the same. So most of the time, you are going to get a letter for every decision and sometimes you'll get a call also. Not every time, I can't tell you exactly, but our department, we work in Individual Assistance, so if we're tasked to call everybody that did not submit their SBA application or that have flood insurance but hasn't turned it in, you may be hearing my voice in the next couple of weeks from Monster's, some of our team, so. Question over here?
The question I have is, has to do with insurance. And I've been dealing with this for like two weeks and so has one of my other friends, kind of going back and forth. What I have here, you know, from FEMA that says, if you accept the funds from FEMA, within 30 days you have to have flood insurance. So I called the NFIP and so did she and we both got completely different. Whether you talk to FEMA or NFIP, we get different.
You get different answers.
Right. So I talked to Allstate, this is for my in-laws, actually they live on Conway Drive and I've been handling everything for them. So I called Allstate and I finally got some word today, but, and I'm trying to get it, you know, we're focusing on rebuilding, they don't have their house anymore, but they're living with us. So I'm trying to get them insurance because this letter says, if you don't have it in 30 days, you have to get those funds back. So what I'm thinking is, does everybody else know about this? Her letter also says the same thing, so I'm just like, are people aware of that? Is that just some people? I have several letters that say, if we don't get it in 30 days, you have to get the funds back.
Yes, I've been through this side of it too. I was in a flood zone. The flood zones are all a little different. Some, you know, you all live in the same neighborhood, some people might be 10 minutes up the road, five minutes up the road. The NFIP people might have a better answer as far as the national flood insurance side of it. Um, there are, there are instances where if you set, accept federal assistance, and you're in a flood zone, it requires you to have flood, yes, they do require it within the 30 days to keep and maintain flood insurance. And what that protects is if in nine months from now, we have another flood, and you're flooded out, we gave you money in a grant form to rebuild, it should be on the insurance side the next time to help you. It doesn't always work that way. Uh, I've worked disasters, where another disaster came two weeks later, and that 30 day window hadn't even started. Um, but the NFIP people, that's kind of their side of it, but the letter should be specific... Yeah, it's from FEMA, it should be specific to your case, or your parents, or grandparents. And other people in this room may not have got that letter. So, there may be, you know, five people that have that same letter. So, I would suggest to speak with the NFIP people, NFIP group. Um, they have a little more background than us, I don't. Um, I do know that if you have insurance, and you register with us, and you never turn in your settlement worth an aisle, you know, because not every insurance is gonna pay you everything that, you know, should be covered, whether it's homeowners or flood. Um, but we need to see legally, we can't duplicate. So if you're gonna get $10,000 and your damage was $50,000, we need to know that. You know, you'll have a declaration page, you'll have an adjuster come out, they'll walk around your house, they'll give you an estimate, or how much...
They did not have flood insurance there.
Okay, okay, so they're probably in the 100 or flood zone, which is flood zone A, that's about as much knowledge as I have, and then NFIP people, NFIP people will take on.
I needed to bring that up, because I'm unsure if people were aware.
Yes, and usually, in most cases, in our, in our office, if we have, say, 500 people on that boat, and we're calling you to say, "You got eligible for home repair, this is how you appeal," things like that, "Did you read or did you get the letter?" Not everybody reads a letter, some people get that, they crumple it up, goes in the trash, please, don't do that. Um, we'll reprint them if you want them, but it's a lot to take in, especially if it's your first time going through a disaster.
You'll have the lady to come see you or me?
Yep.
Or the one?
Right there.
Right over there, thank you, guys.
Either one will be happy to help.
Awesome, thank you. Again, that was for any flood insurance or insurance questions, those are your two go-to people.
Just wanna give you all heads up. Right now, the, um, helpline is running until... I'm sorry. We have a correction on the helpline time. They're running seven days a week from 7:00 to 10:00 Eastern Time, so that'll be 9:00 here. So they have not gone to the 12 hours, or just midnight yet.
Sorry about that.
Um, again, a lot of the information does change over time. We, uh, the FEMA.gov website will also have updates for this specific disaster, or 4223 Texas. So if there's newsletters, if there's press releases, and you don't catch the news, you don't read the newspaper, a lot of those will be captured on FEMA.gov. And you can look for the Texas, you can click on Texas, and you can find your disaster, and they'll have updated information as well. Uh, and again, the recovery centers, um, like the mobile that's out there, and the one that's opening at the end of the week, they will have all the updated information as well. So, um, any other questions right now, Brian?
I have a question. Uh, I believe...
I'll switch on, it's okay.
Okay. Yeah, I believe the counties now assume responsibility for removal of flood debris from residents' properties, and then the counties are then reimbursed by the FEMA or the federal government. Is that generally right, so far?
I don't know, did everybody hear? Did you guys hear it? I didn't.
Do I need to repeat that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So basically, your question is, debris removal is responsibility of the government entities? Generally, yes, it's been sent a public right of way.
Okay.
On private property, they will not go on private property or drive down private streets, but yes, all four counties in this zone are doing that.
Well, that led to my question, is basically, um...
Right in your mouth.
Right.
There you go.
Okay. Yeah, well, you essentially answered my question, is then, is there some sort of provision or stipulation in the regulations that will, the counties will not be reimbursed for that? Uh, for removal of debris from their residents located on private roads?
The, the government entities will not come on the private property. We only get reimbursed a percentage of these cleanups that you're talking about. This debris removal is what he's referring to. That's all the mucking that's going on in your homes, it has to be brought to a public right of way. I know there's a trailer park or two, we have some issues, we're gonna try to resolve that as best we can on the city side, and see if we can get that, some of that out to the road to get that debris picked up. Y'all wanna jump in on that, are you good?
So, is there a word for those specific kind of issues?
Well, that's, those we're, we're aware of, uh, but we can, yes, you can, if you need help with mucking and, and bringing stuff to the street, the VRC, the Volunteer Resource Center, uh, number, uh, and you're gonna have to remind me what it is, it's been a long week. Uh, 753-512-753... 2320. 512-753-2320. The Volunteer Resource Center, if you need help getting things from point A to point B, you can call that number, get it on a, a list, and, uh, they'll send out volunteers, or we can make a work order, uh, if there are volunteers available on weekends. These volunteer groups in the hallways, that's where all these people come from. Uh, we, the, uh, city proper, San Marcos has got a, uh, group that we're, uh, bringing on board to help us with some infrastructure things that we can also use for work orders, uh, on volunteer efforts to get things to the streetway.
So, just one question.
Go ahead.
Can, can that stipulation be not bypassed, but can we work around it by having the property owner give written permission for those entities to come on the property?
There are, depends on which county you're dealing with, but generally, no. Needs to be in a public way. That's, that's the bottom line, we have to get it to a streetway, because we are contracting with other... It's a very tenuous situation. We're contracting with these other people, we're contracting with other people, and we'll get it to the public way, yes, ma'am.
Where's the VRC located?
Right now, it's at the Fish Hattery. As of Friday, we're gonna transition that to the Methodist Church over here off of Hutcheson Street. And the phone number will be, uh, the, the phone numbers change, everything changes based on, for example, today or yesterday. We had a storm coming, the VRC closed down. It generally stays open 8:00 to 5:00, but not that day, today, same thing. They were closed in anticipation of the, of rain. So we're having to flex with what's going on outside, because we have a lot of outside events and people, uh, in bad positions. Of course, nothing happened till 3 o'clock, but we, they, we have to plan almost 12 hours in advance of everything that happens. So if we're gonna close it, we do have 12 hours in advance. So, so look at the website, uh, sanmarcos-tx.gov, and that'll help drive you to what's going on, on that particular day when it comes to times and phone numbers. Yes, ma'am.
Also has to do with debris removal. I live in Markinown, but on the Guadalupe County side.
Right.
Our bridge is still not passable, well, the bridge, the water's off the bridge, but so approaches to the bridge from both county sides, um, are not passable. They've been telling us that it is a county road, even though I think there's some argument in town as to maybe that it's a private road. What do we talk to about getting those roads, um, that, that road open so that we can... stuff across the bridge?
Sure.
So that we can get to our house and, uh, and we can also get a bridge for you?
Guadalupe County judge. Bottom line, bug stop's there. And seriously, if you, that is the person who is your director of the disaster in that county. Now, they got, uh, only IA approval, which is, uh, individual assistance, and I promise not to use acronyms today, I'm still doing it. Uh, individual assistance is the only thing the government has provided Guadalupe County, so that might be some of the delay. So they're having to use their direct funds to make all that happen. So you're gonna have to make, you're gonna have to motivate them, that's the only way that's gonna happen. I understand, uh, they, it's, a lot of it had to do with the tornadoes that came on the back end, and they just got declared a week ago, and throwing into this thing. So we met with them seriously four days ago when this started happening. So they're kinda late in the game, yes? Sure.
This is just regarding our utility stuff. Um, we're just wondering, is there any plans, could I say, in Marcus at all, to help, uh, with our electric bills, because we've been running nonstop?
Electric bills, good question.
If anybody, I, I asked...
I have a bunch of people in the room. I don't know the answer to it. Uh, anybody in the City of San Marcos group knows specifically about any effort towards electric utility? Now, I'll tell you what we do have in place, we have, uh, they try to moderate your bills over an annual period. That program is in place, where you can't get a spike in the summer and that, and wipe you out in one shot. I think we have that still in place, uh, but I can't speak directly to that, that is a great question. And I think it's one of those things, within our organization as a, as a city proper, because a lot, as you can tell, there's people from all around the city, just outside the city limits, in the city limits, well, if you're on the San Marcos utility, I, I know our elected folks and our city staffers look for programs just like that for that issue. Uh, I can't give you a solid answer right now, uh, but we can, well, maybe we can, stand by. I see an assistant city manager walking my way. She wants to know about any kind of relief towards spiked electrical bills for this event because of the mucking and stuff we're having.
That's a great question, uh, the utility is doing all they can, they're waiving deposits for individuals, uh, they're, uh, waiving disconnect fees, and they are willing to work with you on consumption uses. It would have to be really something that you didn't need to prove up of why you had the electric spike, but we will be working with individuals, we will not be disconnecting, uh, for some period of time while people are getting on their feet, but we do need to have people still keep trying to pay what they can so they don't get too far behind. But if you need an extension, uh, we've always had a very, uh, strong policy of working with the San Marcos residents, and we'll continue to do that. If we understand everybody's, uh, at this time in the evening, we'll be glad to work with y'all, so. Ernest Cabasos is the utility billing manager, his number's 512-393-8384. And, uh, he'd be glad to work with, with you, or Yolanda Ramirez for you, those that, uh, know Yolanda, who's been here for 30 years, so.
393-8394.
84.
84, correction.
I have a question from our online viewer, who's asking, has FEMA activated the Corporate Lodging Aid Act for families that do not have a place to stay?
No. That corporate lodging has not been implemented by FEMA. Now, the way that works is, after the damage assessments are done, which you've already been through two, uh, FEMA's gonna have another, uh, assessment on, or on different levels tomorrow, and they're gonna validate what the city and, uh, Mary Cross and other folks who've done assessments in your homes have done. FEMA's doing the IA part, and they're trying to level out, figure, what is the scale? How that is, how many people don't have, uh, a piece of property to be, or a roof over there, got that sort of thing. And that's where that comes into play. Um, and that's what drives that, is.
I wanted to know, because we live at, uh, well, we used to live at the San Marcos Memorial Park, and after that happened, we called FEMA, and they went once, they went twice, and they saw the damage that was done, and we applied for all kinds of help, and they gave us a little bit of help, but what is that supposed to do? And they have all this stuff pending, and pending, and pending. Well, how long is it supposed to pend for? What else are we supposed to do, because with a little bit of help that they gave us, we have to pay to live, we have to pay to borrow vehicles, to go to work, to pay for the gas, to get to work and back. What are we supposed to do now? With whatever they gave us, it's not even enough to fix our vehicles so we could get to work and start a life over. What are we supposed to, how long is it gonna bend for?
I don't know what your letter said, so it's tough, tough for me to answer up here, but loved it to, uh, look at your case. We have people that can help you with that after, it's tough, that's a tough question, because I don't know what your scenario is. That's why the appeals piece, always do the appeal, because what you may be eligible for, uh, may come the second time, and like the, uh, uh, Nathan was talking about, uh, it's based on all those little factors, incomes, that sort of thing, it's hard to answer. For everybody that are equal, it's gonna be based on your scenario. So we'll talk right after, if you'd like, see if we figure it out. Anybody have any other questions, I think Ruben, something's over there.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, inform those people that have electrical bills. Uh, Southside Community Center just got a grant, uh, actually facilitated through the mayor, Daniel Canedo, and, uh, it's about $2,000 to help pay utility bills, and there was some confusion today. It's only those people in the flood area. So the lady that came in today was told $50 towards her bill, and we're paying the whole 112, uh, that she has on her bill. So if you have those bills, you need to bring them to us. Now FEMA has just awarded Hays County $53,000 in several things, they do it every year. Uh, and this year, there'll be about $12,000 for utility assistance. That money will be made available in about 30 days. You have to owe the bill, it has to be late, uh, but, uh, the whole bill can be paid at that time. So there'll be $12,000, and we, uh, and we can't give flood victims first priority, but we will advertise in the flood areas before we advertise anywhere else, okay?
Thanks, Ruben. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
I've been, I've been following, um, I'm not a flood victim, I'm just kinda, I'm here with one of the volunteer organizations, and I've been following on the Facebook pages, there's been a big issue with short-term housing, and people needing somewhere to be for three or six months while they're getting rebuilt. I know that Sarah Ramirez with Catholic Charities is trying to work with some of the agencies, but have we gotten, um, any further on that? Because I know, based on what I'm reading on the Facebook pages for the floods, that is one of the biggest concerns, and one of the biggest areas that people need help.
Yes, Facebook, uh, gives a lot of perceptions of things that may or may not be bad. Yes, we have an intermediate housing problem in the city and the county of Hayes, absolutely. How big is it? That's part of what assessments are all about. We don't get to make the decision on what the assessments are, that's why we have the, uh, different groups, including the volunteer organizations that help us figure that piece out. That has been going on since the first week. Uh, we're day 26 into this thing. Uh, the problem is, you have to take out about six or eight of them, because every time we turn around, another event happens, another tornado flops out of the sky, or, so we have to kind of stop and go, stop and go. Uh, and, and that ties up some of that time and draws just a few more days. So, to answer your question, is there an intermediate plan? We're trying to develop one, we're trying to develop one with the volunteer organizations right now. The interim transmission group has already been formed. They're gonna form what's called a board of directors, and which is gonna get into the long-term piece, and then one of them is construction manager, there's going to be a volunteer coordinator, manager, and all those little pieces of the pie. Uh, and that goes to the, uh, the interim housing piece, uh, and what that looks like. We, we're making those appeals right now, and we're having those fights. As a matter of fact, the council last night just redid a declaration of disaster, and extended it through September, and the whole premise of it was housing, exactly what you asked. So, the governor got a letter today, or last night, actually, about 10 minutes after it was signed by the mayor, and the council just authorized it, with that exact question. We have an intermediate housing problem, crisis, right now, what are you gonna do to help us? So, uh, we're going to get an answer from the top in the state for that, yes, sir?
To add on to that, I guess that was, actually, where I was going, is that, uh, we're in a, in a situation where we're still making, we're still making a, a house payment.
Right.
We're renting, and we're also, because of understanding that this is a college town, is that the renter is saying, unless you're out by this time, you're gonna have to take on a full year on top of your home.
Right.
So, I just wanna know, how is that information gonna get out to us that are, you know, struggling to make these two payments? One's the rent, and one's the mortgage? Our insurance is still to the point that, you know, every duck has to be in a, in a line before you pull that trigger, before you get everything. And that, that 90 days, I don't know if everyone's read, but we were reading hours, and said, by that 90 days, if you don't have your, if you're not back in your home, is that, you know, we're gonna start sending any insurance money to the balance of the loan. Well, how am I gonna get the house done? So there's a lot.
Sure.
And the next thing, we're getting ready to give permits, so.
I'm glad you asked about permits.
That's where I really wanted to go after that, another question. But the fact that, yes, you're gonna have some way for us to get information as to how we can get assistance for assistance living, while this is being done, and the second one was, was gonna be, how are we gonna get the information? We have our first contractor, there's so many of them.
Right.
Get a contractor that we can trust, and that's the second part, and then to get all these permits.
I'm gonna have to write all this down, okay, so, you had... Okay, so you had great, every one of those is perfect questions. Number one, fraud. I don't care what they have on their shirt, what badge they've got, what, you verify who you're talking to. If it's a FEMA employee, they should know more about you than you do, because you filled out all the application. If people are asking you, they're going to verify it's you, your name, that sort of thing, but they can tell you your date of birth, not you can tell them. They're going to verify. That's how you verify with these folks. And there's a bunch of them in the river, correct me if I'm wrong, but check and verify. Trust in this, we have already, and the police chief's done a fabulous job, he's sitting somewhere hiding.
Yeah.
No, he's not, he doesn't hide, he's, everybody can see him. Done a great job. They have been all over this stuff when it comes to the fraud piece, and they've done a real good job of tracking and taking care of that business. Permits. I have somebody can help with permit question. And the information, information's right there. The best way to get information in this event, Kristy Wyatt, our public information officer with the city, she's coordinating all those efforts on our city website. That's the fastest way. We have kiosks in the neighborhoods and impacted areas where you pick up flyers. That probably won't last forever, especially in these rain events, because it knocks out all the kiosks, but they restock them and keep them fresh. That's giving you quick information. So we have three things, short-term, midterm, or intermediate, which you were talking about, and long-term. Those are three issues we have to deal with. Right now, we're still on that intermediate piece, and we got to figure that out. Can you come up and help us with permits? Shannon Mattingly, she's our director of development services, and she'll, and bring in the squad.
I am bringing the squad. I'm going to introduce you.
There you go.
Good evening. My name is Shannon Mattingly. I'm the director of planning for the city. I'm sorry, I'm not loud enough.
You got to stick around.
Okay. Can you, can everybody hear me? Okay. All right. This is Steve Van Patten, who's our chief building official, and Elizabeth Ayers, who is our building services coordinator. And we'll be available tonight. We have some handouts on the table as you go out, I'll take the mic away, towards the side that talk a little bit about the permitting process, what requires a permit, what doesn't require a permit. You know, if you're moving appliances out or just replacing sheet rock, things like that, you probably don't need a permit. If you had issues where the water's gotten up to your electrical outlets, please come talk to us. On residential permits, the city is waiving all permit fees for those residential permits. In addition to that, one of the comments that was made was concerned about contractors and finding contractors. We do have registered licensed contractors in the city and any of the staff in our permit center or online. It's also listed on our website, which is the city's website under planning and then under the permit center. And so that tells you who is registered and who has licenses with the city currently. Please feel free to call us, talk about any of the questions that you might have. Again, we'll be available later during the meeting, or we can answer questions as y'all are going through. The packet that we have at the back will tell you what requires a permit in most situations, what doesn't. It'll tell you a little bit about what we need to have in order to issue that permit. Nothing really technical. If you are a homeowner, you can be your own general contractor. You just need to make sure that if you're having any type of mechanical or plumbing or electrical work done, that that person comes in and pulls a permit from the city to do that work. But you, as a homeowner, can be the general contractor on your own home. The packet that we have also has a brochure in there that will talk to you a little bit about the, how to clean up from mold and how to clean up from floods and things you need to be aware of, especially in regards to like your subfloors and where the floors have gotten wet, making sure that, you know, you're taking care of all that so you don't see mold that continues. And so there's some information with that packet about that. If we run out, again, it is on our website also. We are office across the road, across Hopkins, in the city hall complex. We're at the very back. I said we're at the back of North 40 there. There's the main city hall, and then there's a two-story building, and we're back behind that. And so we do have permit technicians that are there all day long. We don't close at any point, so they're there from 8 to 5. Do you guys want to add any?
Don't be afraid to give us a call, really. I mean, we understand that you're, you guys are all inundated. I lost my house too, so I understand where you're at.
Put the microphone down. Is this not working? We're better now? Nope.
Nope.
Did I turn it off?
Are you dying?
Yeah, we might be dying. Let's get another one. Thank you, ma'am. All right. We did it very close to go.
Yeah, sorry about that. This is better?
Yeah.
I lost my house too, so I'm writing the same, my, since you guys walked in. But don't hesitate, give us a call. I mean, we're not out there to make your life miserable. We're out there to try helping you in this whole situation and get you through. I understand you're being inundated by a lot of different people, a lot of different contractors coming up and down the road. Our intention here is to make sure that you're not being taken advantage of, that the work that you're, you're getting done is being done correctly. So Shannon said, you know, we're not charging permits on this. We just want to be able to get out there and just make sure that when you guys are recovering from this, that you're not going to have problems later on, the best that we can. So please don't hesitate.
No questions. Who's being controlled code enforcement on all the rebuilding?
As far as code enforcement?
On the rebuilding.
On the rebuilding? That would be, that would be part of the inspection team for the rebuilding.
That's right.
Yeah, that's building department.
Okay. Like my landlord has twelve units. Our water, we have a butt, our electrical plugs.
Hi.
Another power went out.
Didn't on my house either. I had, I had four and a half feet in there, and I'm really surprised no walk-in or steer me down. Okay?
But what does this plumbing or AC unit remove? Like my, my AC stayed on, some water through the unit. They're leaving the unit in the house on the remodel. They're not touching the electrical. All they're doing is ripping out drywall insulation, drying the house out, covering it up.
Typically, on the electrical, now I'm going to say this very generic, okay, and then just, and I'm almost afraid to say this, but for the most part, if you've just got water into your plugs, the general repair is going to be on this, is to remove the devices, get rid of, if you've got, and pull the box back out, typically cut about an inch of that Romex back on. Now, we're assuming that you've got Romex wiring inside your house, and we're not old cloth-type of molded fed wiring in there. But if you've got the real Romex, it's got, it's plastic and plastic on top of plastic, cut about an inch of that, that electrical back that's been exposed, the way you were seeing the copper. Get that back, back in there, strip it back on out, put in new device, a clean box in there. You might have to move, move that back up the wall an inch or two compared to where it was at, because, you know, you just cut a little bit of wire off, put that all back together. That is going to be your general fix. My biggest concern for a lot of you folks out there is if that water got 18 inches or 20 inches inside your house, did it get into your service panel outside? And you had, what, what kind of condition did, or maybe the conductors, if you're on a post and beam type house? Was there water that got back in there, maybe affected junction boxers or something that would be underneath that house? These are things that you really need, that you don't see, because there's things that you don't look at every day, but they very well may be part of your electrical system in there. So having, taking the, taking the opportunity to get somebody out, one of us out there to take a look, and just ask those questions. You know, if you don't know to ask them, we, we're not going to know all of them, but we're certainly, we're in the business. We're going to know more than the average, the average person out there that just doesn't deal with it on a daily basis. So to get back to your question, as far as the equipment goes, you know, they've got to go clean this stuff back up, and it's, they've got to remediate for the mold stuff to get this stuff back together. But a lot of times, equipment is salvage, so it's not the end of the world. I'm not going to come right on and say it's because it's got water on it, it needs to be thrown out and replaced, because it may not be the case yet in some cases in mind. So without, without looking at it on a straight-up basis, I, you know, I can't really directly answer that question for you.
I got an extra light show.
Okay. Well, you're not going to have to meet with you afterwards. I can, you know, I'm over at the permit center. I'm there every day. If you'd be comfortable.
He'll be active as well. He needs to talk to you. Hang on.
I just wanted to mention one other thing. We've had some questions come up as to people that are in the floodplain, how is that going to affect them as they're rebuilding? And we're in the process of still doing those assessments through FEMA, but some of you that got substantial damage, there will be possibly a few additional items that need to be taken a look at. So I just want everyone that's in the 100-year floodplain to just kind of keep that in mind as you're coming through, if you have to do the permit process. We'll be taking a look at whether you are currently in compliance with our current floodplain ordinance, which basically just means that you're built above the floodplain. But we can get into details as to exactly how that works. So we just wanted to mention that there are a few additional things that might come into compliance, but we can talk about those individually as y'all come in for each of your permits.
And to add on to that real quick, part of that repetitive loss when you're working with, oh, sorry, part of that, I talk so loud normally. Part of that repetitive loss is that if you are in a situation where you've had substantial damage, and this is a second time or third time that you flooded, especially in the last 10 years, please come or call and talk to us. And just so we can make sure that as we're walking you through this process, that you're meeting everything that you'll need to meet from the FEMA side as well as our floodplain ordinances, because we don't want anybody to get tripped up later down the road where issues might come up. And so we're happy to sit down with you. And like they said, we will be here after the meeting. We're happy to stand around and talk to anybody who wants to come and visit with us. I may, let me give our main phone number as well. Can we repeat that, please?
Uh huh.
30?
This packet is going to be super helpful. I know it's a lot of information thrown at y'all all at once. They're back there on that back table. There's also a few in Spanish, so be sure and grab one of those as you're walking out, and you'll kind of get it all in one piece. We are planning and development services. So that includes your permit center and your inspection division. Shannon Mattingly is our director. I'm Elizabeth Ayers. I'm your building services coordinator. And this is Steve Van Patten, our chief building official.
Yes, sir.
Do you have information on, that you could provide the homeowner about the process of actually the steps to rebuilding? So what would be first, the first step? What would be the second? Is it electrical, plumbing?
So the first kind of rule of thumb is, did you get water that was above your electrical outlets? That's going to be kind of your first test to see what's going to be required. There are some things that if you are kind of below that level, you more than likely probably won't need a permit unless maybe you had some damage to your subfloor. After you kind of, if you did get water above your electrical outlet, come on in and talk to us. Let us know what the damage was that was done. That's really what we need for the permit, is kind of a scope of work of what damage you had done that you need to have replaced. And the pictures, that's all helpful to our inspectors. We understand that not everyone is a contractor, and if you're trying to do the work yourself, our inspectors are here to help you verify that code compliance for you. They're here to answer questions as you're going through that process if you don't have a contractor that you're working with directly, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey inspectors, is that just the, like y'all, is it just for the city? Or is it from, in the county? Because we live off of 21, he and I. So, I mean, do we have to get somebody through the county to?
So, are you in Hayes County?
We are in Hayes County.
Okay, so.
We're out of city limits.
Okay, so the building inspections division generally just requires the building permitting inside the city limits, and the inspections would be inside. However, if there are areas where you have issues and you're connected to our, our water and waste, the city's water and wastewater and electric, we can come out and help with that. The county also has some permitting that they do. I don't know if they have anybody who would actually be able to come out and inspect. I think normally they require you just to hire a third-party inspector in the county. They don't actually have staff that does inspections. Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead. Anybody have anything else on permitting? Next patient.
So we live right on the river, and quite a bit of debris came down from Wembley. Houses, gas cans, propane tanks, and some very large streets. There's just mounds and mounds of it. It is private property. Is there any assistance in getting any of that removed?
All right, so you're talking about river proper. Anybody who lives along the river, either one, San Marcos or Blanco, we have to use a different agency. My, my friends from FEMA don't regulate that part as going to be NRCS, and those folks, it's going to be a year before we get to even that part. That's the way it works for river cleaning. I mean, that's a whole thing all by itself. The massive amount of debris that you're talking about, we're going to have to get permit from, permission from every private property owner. We have to deal with fish and the birds and all the things that we have to protect in that process. The NRCS doesn't have, right now, I've already called them, I've already talked to their main guy in Temple. They don't have funding right now. They're going to get some, I bet you, after this event. So, and it's also hurricane season, so that's, this is a cycle type of event. This happens every year in the United States somewhere. It just unfortunately happened here this year. When we've already used, we've got millions of dollars from those guys. It's not hard to get. It's just whether they have it, we have to apply, we have to do a lot of functions. To be honest, it's going to be a year plus before that river cleanup happens. The stuff, we have GBRA, Balaupi Authority, is going to do some intermediate things. They're going to get the cars out, for example, and some of the bigger things. So we have an intermediate plan. We're not going to be able to get the big stuff. That's going to take some time. That's massive, as you well know, living there.
Hey, I need a acronym, acronym check, GBRA and NRCS.
Good luck on my head. Let's see, National Conserva, or National Conservation Restoration, help me FEMA people, and group, and GBRA, Balaupi Blanco River Authority. It's been a long night, a long day. Question? Yes, ma'am.
Just one more item to share with everyone. I don't know if everybody's square. The Hayes County assessment for your property.
Right.
You can protest.
Right.
And so you need to reach out to them though, and let them know that your property or your home was damaged. And I don't know how quickly they're going to respond, but I'd encourage everybody to do that if your property was damaged.
On that note, the, the authority, or the assessment folks have already gotten a copy of all the ones that have been damaged that we know of. They are re-flying and re-evaluating. It's in their contract. If there's a major disaster, they do it again, and they're going to reassess. So you may not have to, but keep your eye open and follow her advice, and appeal if you have any question on your tax.
I have a question.
Ma'am. He's coming behind him. He's got a stern look on his face.
If for some reason by this point someone has still not cleared out their house or because of, you know, disability.
Right.
Water organizations are still here in San Marcos that can help with that?
The Volunteer Resource Center, the VRC, which will be the, it's going to be based at the Methodist Church, and I still don't remember that number, 512-753-2320? I've had it turned off and on like 20 times, but I still don't remember the number. That number will be hot for some time, at least a month plus. We, and again, we have folks to go with that phone number. It'll be answered from the standpoint of their regular business hours, obviously, and they're going to have like half-days of things they're going to do to get started, that they're going to set up a little bit more formally. But there's volunteer organizations, they're all going to be based out of that. Instead of you trying to fish around and find somebody, we're doing that for you, or the volunteer organizations are doing that for you, and they're making that right for you. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Going back to the housing?
Intermediate, long-term.
Intermediate.
Okay.
Will the, will trailers be an option for FEMA to bring in, for, especially for the people who live in the county?
Right.
And people who wanna work on their own homes? Because I live in the county, and getting to the city to go live in an apartment is out of the question when I work a eight-hour day.
Correct. Now, the, again, assessments haven't been complete. We don't have the answer to that. We just started the process of intermediate crisis, is for lack of a better term. We gave that notice to the governor yesterday evening. The, that's for the city, at San Marcos. The county's in the same boat. We've actually worked very closely in this emergency, so it's kinda one-for-all on this sort of thing. Instead of us doing one thing and the county doing something different, we're trying to track a little closer, so you get a solid response. As a result of that, it's not us doing one thing and the county doing something different. We're using 1,300 homes of damage instead of 700 over here, 300 over there, and that gets a better response. The answer is, I don't know yet. Nobody knows yet. We're trying to make that happen.
So do you have a timeline?
Nope. We don't even know. We just got the, the crisis piece yesterday. They know there's a problem, but they have, they can't do anything until they know what, how big the problem is. The comments on the internet and things like that don't quantify what the, what the number is. So the people on the ground, tomorrow, yeah, tomorrow's Thursday, there, we have another group of FEMA folks coming in just for that piece of the pie, to help answer those kind of questions. They have to see it. They're not gonna go around every house and look. They don't have to reevaluate everything. All they have to do is see that our numbers are pretty, they're gonna go to like 15 spots and go, yep, y'all are right. And then, and that's the magic, and I don't know what that magic number is. But we don't get to make that determination at this level, but, so I don't know. There's rumor going on that if you have flood insurance, it's gonna increase by the thousand, somewhere around $10,000. Our fine friends from the National Flood Insurance Program are in the room somewhere. And we do, are y'all floating around? Yeah, they're right. They're probably in the hallway. Somebody probably already got them at the table. Now, they're here. I've heard that too, but I don't think it's as grandiose as it sounds, but I don't know. But we can talk to those folks and see if I can get them to answer for you. He was asking if the flood insurance is gonna go up dramatically.
On that question right there, what, what agency, I know it's not FEMA, but what agency is gonna do a study on the, on the, I know we got a lot of rain?
Right.
But what agency is gonna provide us a study on the development of this city in the last flood, 1998 to now, of the city development along the river? What impact that did to all of the neighborhoods along the, down the river?
Well, there's a study going on right now in a global sense, from the standpoint, and the city's got its own studies hydraulics, just I think, I understood last night, they're going to implement a study for particular neighborhoods. You have to keep in mind, this is the biggest flood since 1929 ever in history.
That's fine.
Yeah, and so that absolutely is, and this particular flood happened in a very particular place in the Blanco Scarpment. That has never happened since the 20s. You had double Niagara Falls essentially hit. I mean, there's buildings that, but so to answer your question, the city's implementing its own thing for San Marcos proper, but I'm talking for the folks in the county and just outside. There is, everybody from the Corps of Engineers to the USGS, they're doing the actual, how big was it, how fast was it, to help answer those other questions. Because all the gauges broke, so we're having to guess a little bit. But they're actually going out and doing marketing math and all that, figuring it out. Does that help? Yes?
Was there a question? Was there a question?
Yes, sir. For NFIP, is the NFIP gonna go up hundreds of thousands of dollars as a result of this event? You might wanna come up and answer that. I'm gonna put him on the spot. I've been trying to drag him up here all night. I'm trying to get you in front of it all night.
Okay. I'm Laurie Fordham. I'm here with the National Flood Insurance Program to answer any questions that, that you may have. Who answered the que, who asked the question about the flood insurance going on? That's a myth. That is not a fact. I can assure you, I've been doing this for 42 years, and no one's flood insurance, it's totally different than a homeowner's policy. Totally different than a, than a, than a auto policy or a fire policy. People think that, oh, my goodness, I had an auto accident, my insurance rates are going up. Good chance that they will. On a homeowner's insurance claim, if you have a homeowner's insurance claim, windstorm, hail, whatever the case may be, good chance that your premium might go up. On a flood insurance policy, it does not work that way. If you have claims, all FEMA will do is track those claims and make you a repetitive loss structure, possibly a severe repetitive loss structure, that's four or more claims within a 10-year period of time. But the premium will not go up because of past claims. Everybody understand that. It does not go up. FEMA does have, from time to time, they have straight across-the-board rate increases where your policy might go up 10%, but that is nationwide. It does not go up because of claims. Okay?
That sounded pretty definitive. Better than I could do. Anybody else?
One over here.
Yes, sir.
I have a question, sir. This is regards to people that were kicked out alone for housing because of flooding. We didn't have much of a choice to relieve the victims from this place, a brutal disaster. And my question to you, to anybody referenced to directly, what happens to all those people on this campus that can't meet the, the regular rent, who go by income based on what we can afford? And then we're fighting to drag in extensions and shelters right now, just to try to find a shelter, roof over our heads? What happened to us?
Right. IA, Nathan floating around? Now, I think Nathan made comment, he might've stepped outside, about income levels and how they're gonna do their piece by letting him help with that piece on the FEMA side, on the BOAT, on the volunteer organization's side. That's what they take into account, too. They do what are called case management assessments. And they look at your particular case, and you get fed more funding as a result from that side, whereas somebody who has the ability to make the means doesn't get that money. Is Nathan still floating around? Have found him? Hold on to that, and we'll see if we can get him to answer that for you.
I have another question.
Please.
Um, my thing is, why, like, options where we can go back to, like, vacancies, where we can go back to a reliable place called home? If there's vacancies or options like vouchers or something that could help us out to work...
Are you talking about the authority?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I know the authority, the authority is put in a position as a federal agency that they can't take any chances on the help of people, so that, that's why they did the big move-out. You'll also notice they're probably the fastest ones in getting the funding to get things built back up, because they already have a fund for that. So the FEMA piece is more for you, not for the house. The house is taken care of. Have you found him?
Yeah, sure.
All right. You're all, we're just talking about some IA work relative to low-income housing.
Sure.
Issues. Why don't just do that one offline? Might be easier, probably explain it better. Unless somebody else has, let's hear all of them. Does that help? As to why they did it and what they're doing?
You have to reapply.
Right, you have to reapply. That's, that's, but that's the federal standard. We can't manage that. Yes, ma'am? Yes, sir.
My name's Frank Arundel, chairman of the Board of Commissioners. Albert Sierra, the executive director, cannot be here tonight. His wife got ill and had to go to the hospital. But as far as, she, she asked a question, she's busy. Ma'am, people were not evicted from CML.
They were not.
They were not evicted. We needed people to get out so we could start working on the units. Home has started growing. We needed to tear things out, and we had the Texas volunteers here who were helping remove some of the sheet rock, some of the cabinets, and that's expenses that will be kept down on what we have to spend and the federal government has to spend. We're having means with HUD tomorrow and with FEMA to try and see how we can facilitate all this. People will have to reapply. Now, it's unfortunate, but that's what the decision of the board and the authority had to do.
All right, any other questions? All right, so, yes, ma'am?
Have there been any talks of buyouts in the area?
Buyouts? Yes, yes and no. That's, it's still true.
Right.
I know everybody's anxious from, if we have a group of people waiting for a flood, we have, would have all the answers. We're learning just like you are. So first, we have to figure out how big the problem is. Then we gotta figure out what's available to us over here in this agency. I've gotta figure out what's available with the volunteers. I gotta figure out what we can do from a governmental side. So local government, state government, federal government, three different viewpoints, money, and then you have a volunteer group also that has, does it faster in most cases, mainly because they don't have as many rules as we do. And the rules are put in for your protection, or our protection, everybody's, because it's your tax money. So we gotta be, that's why, that's why it's kinda sluggish, it seems like, why it takes time for all these things, we have to reassess and all that happening. So I know, it doesn't sound like a great answer, but we're getting there. We're actually moving at the right speed. I wish we could be faster. It's just we gotta have all these people, we gotta make these boards, they're gonna make a 501. There's gonna be a lot of, there's a lot of money donated. Where's all that money going? That, now, that money is gonna go to long-term recovery, and you don't wanna spend it now when you wanna be able to have houses in the end. Remember, there's over 1,000 homes in this, in this community that have been impacted. Yes, sir? Sure.
I'm here to get footage, but I had a question returning, I mean, returning to the housing. I have a roommate who paid his entire lease out, and he's trying to move out in July, and he was going to just completely just give his room away to a couple that was affected by the floods. Our apartment complex just like stepped in and said, no, they're not students, they can't stay there. I wanted to know if there was like any loopholes that like around to like, you know, let, you know, people stay in student housing? Because, you know, you have a lot of people who wanna leave, you have a lot of people who wanna find a place to stay.
Sure. Well, you asked about 13 legal questions of that one. Well, I mean, there's like 1,000 different things that I would have to ask you to figure it out, so it'd be best for you to go offline. The apartments are private, they can pretty much do what they wanna do as a short answer. But yes, maybe, I don't know. There's, like I said, a million ways to answer that. Yes, sir?
My name is Yowz Linas. I'm a technical company today. You never believe in FEMA. Some people may not appreciate a job, but they're opinion. One, one question I got. What is FEMA and the city of San Marcos gonna do to these landlords that are raising the rents from, I'm just trying to find, five to 800 a month?
Are you talking about apartment rents?
Yeah, apartment rents, shared apartments, whatever's out there.
You'd be surprised, but that is the normal rate in most cases, especially student apartment areas. They pay a lot of money.
There's other landlords there.
Right. If we find out that sort of thing is happening, and we can validate or prove, we can do something about it.
I also heard that the city of San Marcos is not trying to do anything for the low-wage income people, the people that are, not, low-income people?
Yes, sir.
For example, they live in housing and...
Right.
That connect?
That's what we were just talking about, with the authority and such. Yes, sir.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the other, the low-income people, they're not trying to, you know, be like, having any shared parts, any new agents, applications to San Marcos anywhere. We go, if that's true?
If it's true that...
Do you need subdivisions, you, for the people that...
Oh, subdivisions and development?
Yeah. Any new ones?
Any new ones?
Or going completely?
There's always, depending on what develop, there's very, very little actually. Home development's just now started, and our client director probably speak to that better than I could.
They also got local home parks that could be built, you know, a thousand...
Right.
...for two months, isn't it? Why are they not gonna do that?
Well, I'm not sure who "they" is, but if you're talking about, do we not allow low-income housing? No.
Do you have a city of San Marcos, I mean...
I'm sorry?
Is there any talk about that, or is it, you mind, the city of San Marcos? And what I'm hearing is, the city of San Marcos is not trying to do anything like that.
No, that's not accurate, actually. We, we have, we have to provide low-income housing. We do that in multiple ways, but again, that's the...
Because everything's pretty cool right now in San Marcos. There's no, it's pretty much...
Right. Everybody's, if everybody's taxed out, we just emptied out 1,000 homes.
A lot of people are being forced to go to Austin, San Antonio, other little cities that didn't get affected.
Right.
And they gotta move by choice.
Yeah, I don't have an answer to your question. I, we probably get somebody to help you right after, but that's a lot of questions.
I have somebody called Laurie Fordham, yeah.
Right. A lot of politics in there, too.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. For those of you that don't appreciate it.
I appreciate it. Any other questions?
I just wanna say something.
Yes, ma'am.
They're talking about so much about low-income, low-income. It's my point of view. Stand on your two feet, move on, and work harder. That's all I can say. I got a grandson that's 17, is working two jobs. He's paying my rent where we're staying at. So a 17-year-old can work two jobs, well, we all can do it, too. Because, I mean, I just feel like everybody's feeling sorry for themselves. I mean, we just gotta pick up and move on. I mean, I mean, the past is the past. We all gotta be here for each other. I mean, if someone needs food, then call somebody, we'll be there to give you food. I mean, why be embarrassed? You need help to be packed, then get together and help each other pack. I mean, we all talk about that, we need this, we need that. Well, we all need each other to help each other with stuff.
You're right. Our, our objective is to make the community whole the best we can.
Yeah.
We can't fix all the things, and I'm not gonna agree or disagree. We're, our objective is to answer questions tonight, so we're gonna cut down on those if we can. I'd appreciate it. I understand, you agree. I just, I'm not, we're not gonna, we can't do that tonight. We got too many people in the room that are here to help you, out in the hallway. I think that pretty much wraps it up. I don't see a lot of hands screaming in the air. We can go one-on-one with you folks if you'd like, right after. Everybody's gonna hang around. Appreciate you coming out. It's been an hour and a half, so not bad. Thanks, guys. Yes, ma'am.